My daughter's having an outdoor wedding on Sunday. We just got notification that we have to change it all to inside. So, yeah, so I'm a little bit frazzled because it was on the way here and it's like, oh, no, we have to, oh, okay. Well, working in this and so, but it'll work out. So I told my daughter it'll be perfect no matter what. Anyway, so today we're here to discuss, consider, and take possible action to approve the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three City of Sonoma operating and capital improvement budget. And then we have three resolutions for the council to adopt. So on May fourth and May eighteenth, in two special budget study sessions, the interim city manager presented, that's me, presented the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And this included all of the estimated revenues, recommended appropriations for operations and capital, recommended capital improvement program, and a list of authorized positions. So the budget presentations just provided an opportunity for staff and the council to hear a report from, or staff to present their fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budgets. And then they also discuss their key accomplishments, priorities, and goals and challenges for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And then it also provided an opportunity for city council to ask questions and also for the general public to provide input on the proposed budgets. So the operating capital budget, it's a policy document which sets the financial course for the City of Sonoma and defines the service priorities provided to the community. The budget is just an annual spending plan. And it can-
Is this two?
I'm just talking. I'm just on page one. It's a staff report. So it's just, you know, it's a, it's a plan and a budget is always, can be changed at any time. It just provides our best recommendations and forecasts for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So the document that you have, it contains all the necessary elements for the budget appropriations and adoption. But a budget book will be presented later at, in the, at the August seventeenth meeting. And that will be the final budget document that you're used to. But this binder has all of the information that's been presented at the former two study sessions. So the development, the budget development included a detailed analysis of the pandemic's actual input impacts on fiscal year nineteen-twenty, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, and fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we projected revenue and expenses for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two to see where we would end up and our projections for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And we also updated the five-year forecast for the general fund to understand how the pandemic has affected the city's use of reserves and also what we're forecasting going forward. So you do have a revised long-range plan in front of you and that's, it's on page eighteen. But it's, we revised two numbers. Sales tax actually got, for twenty-two and twenty-three were actually reversed. And so this document corrects that. And so what, what happens is the- Do I have that document? So for twenty-two, twenty-three, the surplus went down a little bit. And then for twenty-three, twenty-four, it actually went up just because the numbers were reversed. Okay, this is it. This is something different. So, and then in the city manager message, that really contains a lot more doc- detail on the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget development process. So, so that with the uncertainty of the current economy and its impacts on our local revenues, proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget will be an active plan with proactive monitoring and review based on the, on, on all the changing information that we get throughout the year. And then with the one-point-nine-trillion American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funding, which is included in the budget, we actually not program that, that money. So in your long-range plan, you'll see down at the bottom that it's actually been subtracted and we can actually see what the general fund revenue is without that extra funding. So the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the City of Sonoma and the Sonoma Successor Agency includes a combined operating and capital improvement program budget of thirty-eight million, six-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. And the proposed general fund budget is twenty-three million, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine. And that's including all the transfers. Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, that should be twenty-two, twenty-three. Revenues are projected to be twenty-five million, five-one-four, nine forty-five. So again, it's important to remember that the proposed budget is a plan and the city council can modify and adapt the budget as we proceed through the fiscal year. And the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget also includes a five-year capital improvement plan, which was discussed at the May eighteenth meeting. And again, this is a simplified document that you're approving tonight. It has all the necessary elements to adopt the budget. But again, we're preparing a final budget book that will, you know, contain all of the appropriations with a more comprehensive overview of city services and projects for the fiscal year, beginning on July one. And it will also contain a revenue summary, expenditure summary, reserve summary, program budgets, et cetera. And that will be presented to council for review on August seventeenth at the council meeting.
What page are you on now?
I'm just still talking.
I'm still talking.
Yeah. So actually, I am really, I, I'm not going to go through it page by page unless the city council has specific questions on particular items in the budget.
Are you asking us?
Yeah, so I'm turning it back over to council for questions, which you may have on the budget.
So, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question on page two?
Yes.
One, two, three. There it is.
Page two, the staff report?
I guess. It was about, with several vacant, I don't know if we have the same thing. With several vacancies at the management level, organizational structures are being evaluated for optimum efficiencies. And I think you've done that.
Yes, so that was part of bringing the assistant to the city manager position. And then again, we're also looking with, right now, we have a vacant administrative services director, assistant city manager position, which actually is in the budget, but we're not filling it at this time. And we're going to take a look at the organizational structure of the finance department to determine, you know, really what is the best structure. Maybe we need just a finance director instead of the administrative services director who is over HR and finance.
Oh, I see. But we're still sticking with assistant to the city manager.
Yeah, that position is still in-
I feel like I can do it now. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm still happy. I can get off my knees.
Me too.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, that's it.
So questions from council?
I have a question for general fund forecast summary.
Yes.
Just the most updated.
Yes.
This is- Year two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes.
Yes, that's the budget. We have the surplus, right? Yeah, we have the surplus that is the four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand and fifty dollars. In that, I can assume this surplus could be applied to our reserve fund.
It, it could. One of the things that we're still talking about, we're still in negotiations. And this, the proposed budget is, has a, a three-point-five percent salary increase as a place holder. But we have not completed negotiations.
Okay.
So, um-
Okay.
All right.
Three percent, it's three point seven percent.
It's already included in the budget.
Oh, including the budget.
Three to three and a half percent, it's already included in the salaries and, and benefits total.
Yeah.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a little bit of an emergency.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no problem.
I have another question about the forecast. Can you explain a little your thought process about the assumptions that went into this?
The assumptions, yes, yeah. So the property tax, sales tax, and the half-cent sales tax are all, that we get those forecasts from our HDL, who is our expert on those. Transient occupancy tax is a little bit harder. But we, we did conservative growth of two and a half percent every year. Now, sales tax, they've predicted around a three to three and a half percent increase every year. But based on, you know, just not knowing transient occupancy tax, occupancy tax is hard to predict. So we went conservative.
And TOT comes-
That's TOT, yeah.
TOT comes late from the county, is that the one?
Uh, sales tax and, actually comes late.
Oh, okay.
They're about two months behind. Transient occupancy tax, we're always a month behind because, say, for May, TOT would not be due until the end of June, so.
But that was the general question, that the projections are generally on the conservative end of things moving forward?
Yes, yes.
And so they don't take into account potential new hotel rooms coming online or any of that?
No, yeah, because it's potential and we have no idea.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
And then the PERS liability is actually given to us by PERS. So they give us a five-year forecast on that as well.
Those kind of revenue, I think that we projected, that is, it's kind of very, very, you know, close to reality, I, I believe, because we see trend here. But for those kind of expenses, I wonder if this kind of the, is very aggressive or media or very conservative?
I would say that it, you mean for expenditures on the expenditure side?
Yes, expenditure.
Salaries and benefits, it's, I mean, because we're in negotiations, there, you know, we did a three and a half percent, three and a half percent. There's, I mean, you know, we couldn't really tell until we're done with negotiations. Fire and police contracts, we have them growing at, is it three and a half percent every year? I think it's three and a half percent every year, so. And then the other ones, we grow at two percent only because we don't know how the economy goes, so. That's, that's pretty, we, we kind of base it on history, how it's grown, so.
You mentioned about the police service increased by four percent or next fiscal year?
Yes, next.
Four, four percent?
No, for next fiscal year, it's actually in the budget. We talk about the percentage increase, so.
When do the public safety contracts end and restart?
They start with the fiscal year.
No, but aren't they like three or five years?
Oh, the salary, that, um, the MOU, did you just do it for a year?
Like, I know the police is like-
So we, we have a, we have a tentative agreement right now with the board of directors and all of the employee groups for a four-year contract. So that goes to our board on June fifteenth. So assuming that that is, you know, approved by the full board, then that will be in place. And so we'll have a contract for the next four years.
Okay, great. And police ends next year?
Oh, I, you know, um-
They did it in twenty-twenty.
I think they're up, I think they're up next year.
Yeah, I thought it was three years.
Yeah, next year, this next year, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And they did, we did include the, the new deputy in there, that the city will be actually paying the, the portion of that, the COPP deputy.
Yes.
Orlando did say that they're having trouble hiring right now. And so, you know, we've included a full year of that, of that salary. But they haven't started the process yet and, you know, he's saying realistically, it could be six months before that position as well.
Is this the one who's talking about to share with Windsor? No, this is something totally differently.
No, um, no, it's the community, um, you know, the one that will just be involved in community, you know, right?
Because that is a mental health officer. Oh, okay.
More, more to like all of the services that, um, in the city, so, school, everything, so.
We know we were, we have the scheduled in a meeting with the school district superintendent.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. So we want to talk about school resource officer. If they agree and the, do we have additional money for that one-third? Or included or not?
It's not included because I, yeah, it would-
Not included, okay.
So the way it was done before was, you know, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three. So, but that's not included in there. But again, there is, there is surplus, so, you know, so that we couldn't-
That a position, I believe, is two, three hundred or three hundred thousands?
Close to that, yes, yeah.
Yes.
So in the expenditures, other operating costs, is that sort of just like a catch-all? And I noticed it goes down. I'm just curious what that consists of.
So there's-
For example, like when we give money to our community service partners, et cetera, I assume that's all in there.
That's all in there for this year, there's, um-
Yeah.
I'd have to open my computer to, um, there's, there's quite a few things that were, that are in the budget for this year that, like we have the city manager recruitment, we have, um, so there's, there's a lot of contractual things that are happening this year that we're, that going forward, we're not going to have. So that's the reason that it drops. City manager recruitment, um-
Is there like, is it in the binder somewhere? Because I guess, I mean, in general, like we go about it by department. But then every department, obviously-
Right.
You know, it's all sort of divvied up into these different categories.
Right. Yeah, so it is, it is, yeah, and then it's all combined into this long-range plan.
Like operating, other operating costs take on projects from, I assume, every different department, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have elections this year, we have sixty-five thousand, right? And we have, so there's a lot of things that were, that were in the budget this year. Yeah.
This year, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
Um, there's a number of things that, that, you know, aren't ongoing costs, so they're subtracted.
And also we hired a consultant for the homelessness.
Yeah, we actually put another thirty thousand-
That is additional.
Yeah, wait, it's in the budget this year for additional, right? Yeah.
And labor negotiations.
Oh, labor negotiations, yeah.
Okay.
Is that sort of standard though, every year we have special things, you know?
I would say that this year is special. We have quite a few things, um, we also have-
That's one special year, yes.
It's a special year. So, yeah, like the, the election, the city manager recruitment, the negotiations, and, uh, yeah, and the financial, the audit, we have two years of the audit cost in this year. But going forward, we'll just have one year, yeah. Yeah, we had in the final upgrades to the permitting software in this year, but, um, that, that'll be done.
Right, yes.
I remember last, uh, two, uh, two weeks ago, we finished capital improvement project. But we haven't go through some of these small, for example, community activities, do you want to go through that again or?
It's up to you.
Yeah, because, for example, if anything that new, in a visitor account, oh, uh, number, page sixty.
Community activities. There, there was no changes to community activities from what we originally presented?
Okay.
Okay.
No, not every.
I think the one thing, the information that we did give you was the, um, the cost of, you know, the subsidy for rent and things that we were providing, yeah.
Right, yes.
So, but there's, there was no changes to that budget.
Also, I saw that field of the dream, they requesting for sixty-four thousand and seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, that is for improvement for the fear or complex. That is page sixty-four.
Sixty-four in section three? You're in section three, right?
Uh, that is the, yeah, one, two, yeah, it's not a section. Oh, I'm sorry, that is under account, under account, community activities. Account number four-three-one-oh-one. Community.
Oh, it's requesting, they requesting thirty-five thousand.
Yes.
And so it's just thirty-five thousand. That has not been included in the budget yet because we need to discuss what, what the actual budget is.
What do they want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what wasn't included in the budget?
Thirty-five thousand for Field of Dreams, although it says that they requested it, we have not included it in the budget.
Okay, oh, I see, right.
Because, yeah, we need to discuss with them the exact changes that they, yeah.
So I guess when do we discuss all that? Like, I, I want to say at the last meeting, we talked about allocating, or there was like ARPA funding, there's going to be a surplus. When do we, do we discuss that at the retreat in August?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. So we have the one-point-three million, which really has not been programmed yet. And so that will be a discussion.
Maybe we don't, maybe we do. So that's all in August. So obviously, the budget can be modified.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Always, right?
Yeah, and that one-point-three million is, you know, there's, there's quite a few things out there that we-
Next month.
Yeah, that we, uh, August.
That's also my birthday.
Oh, that's in August.
My birthday is in August.
Which day?
Seventeen.
Oh, we are very close.
My birthday is on the fifteenth. I never, I never seem to get out of a council meeting.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Too many Leo's in the room, we gotta be careful.
So can we go back, uh, page sixty-three?
In section-
Yeah, section, that is the community account, same, yes.
In the back, page sixty-three.
Yeah, in the back, yeah.
In the back of the general fund study session.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, before section-
Like the-
Four, yeah.
Yeah, back there.
Yeah, before section four, yes.
That page sixty-three, yeah.
Yes?
Yes, that is, uh, second law, uh, second paragraph, continue to participate Sonoma Valley Homeless Facility Initiative Project in partnership with the supervisory board. I think this project is gone already. Do they have that a new money or, I believe that is the last fiscal year, they already, they already gonna close this project. Because we tried to apply, but we missed the data line last year, so that we didn't get it.
Um, I, we will be participating in a, um, in a partnership with the county to, to look at homeless services. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what you're talking about, what that might-
Yeah, because here, this program is very specific. That is so-called facility. Some improvements or the added some of the bathroom or to buy some machine, and then a washing machine or dryers. I remember that, last year we discussed.
Right, I think she put the wrong word in there. Um, it is, it's Sonoma Valley Homeless Initiative Project, she put facility in there.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, no, this facility, I think, yeah, yes. That makes sense.
Successor Agency?
Mm-hmm.
I continue to be, oh, I'm, uh, six-sixty-six.
Oh, sixty-six.
I continue to be confused about it. I mean, well, what hap, what, what's happened to us with the successor agency? I know we had money that was, you know, successor agency, they were overseeing whatever properties, I think. If you, maybe you could just share a little bit of that with us.
Okay, so, well, the successor agency is, you know, has been dissolved. And so, um, right now, all we're funding is the, um, you know, we did the refinance of the bonds, the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. So we have a two thousand twenty-one bond and a two thousand fifteen bond. And so, um, just what's, you know, we don't, we, we don't, we don't have, we're not getting any new funding. And so all we're doing is really continuing to pay off the debt from the redevelopment agency. And there's some funding we get, we get two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for administrative costs. We actually upped it this year, um, for some reason, they kept lowering it, but we have-
So is that for your staff or the successor agency that does the work?
It's for the staff time, it's for staff administrative time. And, you know, preparing and doing all the, the work for the, the ROPS, so.
Thank you.
Um, at our retreat in August, I think it would be good to talk about how we fund our community activities and partners. And I know they've talked about that in the past and it always sort of changes from time to time. But, um, you know, for example, like, do we get any sort of reports from like the vintage house or community center about how they spend our money or what programs they fund or?
That, that is-
I feel like they just sort of depend on our check every year and we don't really hear anything about it.
Right, and so that, that is something that, that, that is, is stated in their contracts. So from, you know, we're going to start, um, you know, doing more of that proactive work and get, and finding out what the funds are being spent on. And, um, you know, so that, you know, we, we, and we, we get a copy of their financials and those are all the things that are, that are in their agreements and we're just going to take a more proactive role on that, so.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I'm fine with it for now, but like moving forward, you know, um, I think it's, I would like to also know why we fund our nonprofits at different levels. Like, I'm sure there was a reason at one point, but, you know.
Right, right. Yeah, we can discuss that at the, at the retreat, because there's one thing that, yeah, that we, we kind of wanted to, I mean, I do believe that we should be taking, every time we give funding to some organization, we want to know what exactly it's going to be used for. And then at the end, you know, after they use the funds, they give us, yeah, they, they give us a report on what the funding was used for, so.
Do they do what they say they're going to do?
Yeah, don't they stand up at a council meeting and give a report?
Um, they, they, they were supposed to, we don't, we haven't had, some of them do annual reports. But we haven't really had that in the past couple of years, so, that's something that-
So who, who you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Who you have to oversee that to make sure that they do?
Lisa.
Okay.
TID group, they want to give us annual report.
Mm-hmm.
You, uh, usually when?
The TID, I'm not really sure when that comes. I haven't had a, actually, did we do a report last year? I don't recall that, but, but that is something that, I mean-
Last year, we did in-
The TID, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure we can request that, we can do that soon, so. Yeah.
Yeah, the reason is, you know, the TOT tax increases a lot and the data percentage also proportionally. So that maybe, well, we can work together, go to wisely use this additional money.
I agree.
I think actually the TID contract ends in two or three years, right?
It's-
I think it goes through twenty-twenty-five or so.
I'd have to look, but I, I think it's, yeah, it's either twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Obviously, this is irrelevant for the budget we're going to pass today, hopefully. But moving forward, as we talk about the future, I do think that would be a good, maybe a retreat topic just to talk about the future of the TID. You know, in my view, we've talked about this before, we are limited on high, on how high we can raise the TOT because of that sort of two percent, you know, at some point, we have to be competitive in the market. And, you know, from what I understand, it just goes back to the visitor's bureau and obviously funds lights and other special projects. But we don't necessarily have any say over how it's spent. And I know a lot of it is spent on advertising. And moving forward, as we've discussed before, I think a better use of that funding could be, instead of a TID, a, like a plaza improvement district, for example, where, you know, a million dollars a year, maybe not just the plaza, parks throughout the city, um, you know, reinvested in the plaza, I think is the best advertising for Sonoma there is to begin with. And then obviously, it's also great for our, our local residents as well. And so, if we're going to make any ma- And so if we're gonna make any major changes in that, I think we should probably start talking about that soon because.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're only two or three years away from that.
Right, and I'll find out for sure when that contract ends.
Yeah. You know, and also other communities, including, I believe, Fieldsburg, where you recently came from. The Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau is all one organization. And to the extent that there's sort of a duplication of efforts, maybe there is, maybe there's not, I don't know. But I, you know, as we move forward, obviously, no drastic changes today, or maybe even this year, but we should start thinking about how we have everything, I would say, set up structurally.
We can't do anything required, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce is its own organization.
It is, and I think the Visitors Bureau is as well, but to the extent that we fund them and can encourage them to join forces.
Right, but, I mean.
They're both no.
Yes.
But we don't fund, I mean, the Chamber also has its own statewide organization and all of that, you know, it's. Whereas, you know, the Visitors Bureau is ours.
Yeah.
We we do fund the the Chamber as our economic development arm, right, right, cause we don't have economic development.
And the Visitors Bureau, right?
And the Visitors Bureau, yes.
And just even moving forward, I would like to even just talk more about a Visitors Bureau and what the function of that is today. You know, for example, a lot of, um, you know, ten, twenty years ago, you, when you visited a town, you sort of went to the Visitors Bureau to get a map and sort of learn about where you go, but now that's all on your phone. And so I know that they take up a significant portion of our city property within the plaza. And, um, again, I like the Visitors Bureau, something against the Visitors Bureau, I just think moving forward, just to be more efficient and. I think it's important to look at things every time, yeah.
Sure, yeah, yeah, um, so that that should end up thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Right, okay, so, it's gonna be here before we know it.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing those up, because one of the things that I I have asked another council possibly as well
That's good, yeah.
Is that I think history and the arts should be part of what Visitors Bureau does and also Chamber. And it's never part of what, you know, they're getting people to stay in hotels, which of course is what they're paid, what they are paid to do. But I think that there's a lot more to Sonoma, uh, than drinking wine and going and having wonderful food. I mean, there's also a rich and full history here. And, um, so I'm really, I'd like to have that added to the table as discussions with them to include the arts and, uh, history.
Yeah, I totally agree, yeah, you and the council. So no, these nonprofit organization, I think they are using the different perspective, just like in the cities window. History and art and also the Visit Bureau. And so how they can co- cooperate each other. For example, the, right now, we still don't have one that a master and the website showing each, you know, organization. Where you have this kind of event, a lot of event and timely, they have that conflicts.
Right, so we actually, um, I don't know if you were, had a chance to look at the, um, new Parks and Rec, um, website that was created in-house. Sarah did a fabulous job of doing that, but it has, it has quite a bit of information in there about all of the, um, um, the different organizations. And then, and so if you type in events, then it it actually brings up all the organizations that have events and you can go to their website. And so it's kind of a a master, we haven't had that before, where we, you know, had a list of all the the different providers and the organizations in the valley, so.
That is, that is in our cities, uh, website, we have this, oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, and it was just, she just, yeah, she just, um, rolled it out, um, I think she sent you a copy of the rollout and the.
Okay. Okay.
Sarah, Friday, yeah.
Sarah did that.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good.
Yes, it's on our website, if you, if you type in Parks and Recreation, it'll come up, so.
Because. In the last couple of the week, uh, last couple of month, I heard that our KSVY and SVTV, they purchase a website domain name. That is so-called, and the Sonoma Events, they have the, they want to make an effort to, you know, the coordinate within each another party and the city, and maybe, maybe later, I wanna ask the gym contact with you, right? Yeah, you know, Bob, you know, we talked about that website, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes, yes, so Sonoma Events, or?
Yeah, there's various ones, some valley events.
So then, maybe we can do some rewrite each in the party, uh, it's not a rewrite, you know, send it over, for example, send it to the city and we can update if anybody have the events for sure, you know, not it.
There is a, there's, yeah, if you, it's interesting, if you go to our website, there is quite a bit of information there contained on our website, but, you know.
Yeah.
It's quite vast.
A lot of people don't take advantage of it, but it's, we have a pretty extensive website.
Many in the city, oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
No, 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 you.
Yeah, many the people, they have the similar interest, at the same day, they have the two events.
Oh, right.
They they want to go, but they cannot, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, because I'm going to a pollinator class tomorrow night, there's another event, I have to make that decision. I'm going with the pollinator class, my husband will not, he's gonna watch some stupid Warriors game or something.
NBA Finals, pretty serious.
Do we have more questions or if we do not, I want to open to public.
I have one more question.
Why you stop?
Okay.
Um, so we don't, the city doesn't have a lot of debt, correct? Like, we have debt service, but there's really.
No, we have, we have one, um, it's one debt now, uh, it's the P G N E, not P G N E, it's the, uh, um. Yeah, P G N E is paid off, so, no, it's for, it was for lighting, um.
Oh, was that the LED?
Though it's been a project, you know, the one that's in the, it's back here in the plant, so. It's forty, it's about forty-nine thousand dollars a year, I can tell you that, so, that's it.
And then, um.
And then there is that, we have a, uh, a loan in the water fund too, so.
Yeah, so I guess my just general question is, is that common for a city to have as little debt as we do? And is that, like, for example, if we wanna build a new park on the west side, if we wanna do this, we wanna do that, we're always, you know, obviously, we don't have a tremendous amount of funds to do that, but obviously, you know, in the private sector, you would finance it with our sort of revenue stream, it would be easy to do that.
I I would say that.
Something other cities do, is that something we should start thinking about or?
Other cities do, um, yeah, they absolutely do, and this, I would say this city is the, has the lowest debt of any city I've worked in, yeah. And it's a way.
Which sounds good, but at the same time, maybe we're not.
Right.
Give value, you know.
Right, so when you finance something, I mean, sort of the philosophy is, is that you're, so that every year that people are paying, you know, who use the services over the life of the debt.
Right.
You know, so instead of paying for it all in one year, so say if you're using a park, so that services are, you know, parsed out over the life of the debt. So, um, because that's how long it'll last, so. So it is long, it's very long, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just, you know, I I think there's just a lot of things that our residents want and that we, you know, the city council has talked about recently. But obviously, a lot of that costs money.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we have, we start putting in the capital improvement program, I mean, it takes years to accumulate funds. And I'm just wondering if there's any other ways to sort of finance things, to sort of.
And and grants, there's, there's a lot of, there's special partner.
Yeah, and with rates is, I mean, they're not as low as they were, but.
Yeah, but, yeah, they they were, so, yeah, so financing is is a way to do that, and, um, there's a lot of.
Yeah. And is that down through like bonds or is that require votes or, you know, from the people, like I?
Uh-huh, bonds. A bond requires a vote.
Some of these questions are just general questions about municipal finance, I don't know.
Yeah, so a bond would require a vote.
Yeah, uh-huh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanna mention something else.
Yeah. Yeah.
For the general, for everybody, you know, this huge crowd that's here, but, uh, I just wanted to mention that nonprofits do work that we could never afford to do. I even heard that many, many years ago from a council member, it's good and bad, but it's, you know, it generate, it does so many wonderful things. And of course, our city provides services for people, children in the valley. And that's not really our responsibility, but we feel that we should be responsible for that. So I think those are some of the things that we should probably highlight, that we do those things. And, um, and that we could never do what they do with our, with our.
And I think that, um, I think how we do, uh, sort of Parks and Recreation here is brilliant, because a Parks and Rec department never makes money. It's, it's extremely, you know, time-consuming, you have all of your part-time people that come in for the summer and then they're gone. And, you know, you, it's just, it's a really time-consuming, you know, labor-intensive. Um, and so what we do is we use our nonprofits to to provide those services. And it's, it's, it's really worked well for the city and it's really kind of a brilliant way to do it, so.
Yeah, nonprofits, of course, are wonderful, but the issue for nonprofits is they do good work. And they just wanna concentrate on what they do, they don't wanna do the icky stuff, like accounting, marketing, social outreach. They don't wanna do those things, cause it's sort of like icky, but it's, it should, the, I think the commitment should be to run it like a business, like a business.
And I would say that most of our nonprofits probably do, um, you know, I don't think that we've been really, I don't think we've been, you know, that,
Yeah, I think you're right.
like I said, proactive in getting the kind of reports that we should.
And I, you know what, and, you know, possibly what you're saying, but it's interesting that foundations are really supposed to be doing that work to train nonprofits, how to do grant writing, how to do all, so we really lack those services here in in the county. I mean, they had the volunteer center and they did a quasi something like that, but it would be nice if we could, uh, if the nonprofits could take a stand and say, you know what, we need a research library, and I think that Hannah does have one. And they did often offer it, but I don't know, you know, if any, if any, not us, we don't have to do that work. But that, I think presidents, the nonprofit presidents, and then the board members, I think they meet. And they should actually ask Hannah if we can use your research center to research grants and, oh, we have somebody here who has experience at Hannah, I don't know, but I know that they do have a a library and I don't know if it's, you know, it's up to date. But where I came from in San Mateo County, the foundation invited everybody, they would have classes.
Okay.
All of those things, and it's a shame, so maybe that, I'm, it's not our responsibility, but it's certainly something that we can think about.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, education, yeah, it's it's kind of important. For example, in the local lottery, you know, the young people, actually, they haven't recognized they do have the potential to buy the house or they never thought about that, you know, lack of the education. So now when we, we do have, you know, affordable housing, trust the fund, but the most important is, you know, let them and realize you know, how much they can, you know, afford, you know. That is the, yes, just related to your, you know, education, training, research, and provide this kind of tool for them.
You want questions?
If no question, let me open to the public. Steve, do you have questions? Chief, both of you, you can talk, and also Bob, you can say something, yeah.
Just wanna say a good job by Sue, she did a good job this year, last minute, came in and hit a homerun with it.
Yes, that is, yeah, I agree.
I agree.
And it is too, it's been really done, I'm like, I've been lifting on this budget, so, she's done a fabulous job.
And it is, yes, and it is.
I don't have to be on my knees anymore and ask for assistance of the city manager. I, they're all old, they're not even bruised anymore, thank you, thank you, Sue, such a great decision.
Also, we appreciate you send the people deliver the surrender to us, yeah.
Yes, yeah, with special delivery, yes.
That's nice, yeah. Yeah, anyway, you know, this is a budget, yeah, if the, anything that change, financial change, or if the, what do we need to change? And we, we can make amendment, you know, and, you know.
Right, right, and we will, we will be discussing other things at the the retreat, so that we can, yeah.
To be honest, this kind of stuff for us, yeah, it's a little bit overwhelming, you know, it's a little bit overwhelming, they're good. So when I, uh, read the best, I bring the last years, I make the comparison, and in this way, I, I can gather, you know, a little bit more, you know, idea. So now I have another idea is, you know, right now, our income has been increased. So the, again, you know, when we have the retreat timely, we need a thinking, how to increase our, you know, reserve fund. How we can put more money in the reserve fund and how we can use and the money to improve our current service. How to balance, yeah, that is important.
So I think it's for three months expenditures, is that what, is that the normal or some places have fifty percent reserves, so.
Two months.
Two months?
Two months, right now, two months, yeah.
For two months.
Yeah, fifty percent reserves is extremely high, and really, that would is, you know, then you're not, you you could provide services for that amount, so.
Hopefully, when we receive the one point three million dollars from American Rescue, the fund, and then we can get enough money. Increase our reserve from the two month to three month. That is the, I believe, that's one, one, one million or something.
Do you anticipate that we'll be programming the surplus in August? What kind of number do you think we'll be programming?
Well, I would definitely be programming, I think you should be programming the ARPA funding, that's a one-time funding and definitely, so it's, you know, you wanna think about one-time projects, probably that you wanna, that you wanna fund. The surplus, again, we're, we're still thinking, we're still in negotiations, so.
So, okay, so then with the ARPA funding, are you, do you anticipate us programming all of it or a portion of it goes to reserve? I mean, obviously, that's up to us, but what, well, I know that, but what would your recommendation?
It's up to you, yeah.
Is that something we should talk about in August or?
I, yeah, I mean, I, you know, we could talk about it in August, I think we have, um, for the size of our budget, I think we have a, a good reserve. Um, and you have to remember that during the pandemic, it was, uh, we we did use some reserves, um, that was unprecedented. We didn't, you know, who would have thought that something like that could occur? But, um, so, and that's what we used our, our, uh, funding for, but we were able to replenish it, so. So that, again, it's, you know, what percentage do you wanna fund at? We, you know, we we use the Gatsby guidelines on how much you should should put aside in reserves. And so, you know, there's, they don't, they don't tell you a specific percentage or dollar amount, but they give you a range, so, and we're within the range, so.
And we would be okay even if we didn't receive any ARPA funding, if that program didn't even exist.
We would. Yes.
Our reserves would sustain us, yeah.
Yes.
I have another question, that is a big question, how about, oh, no, no, unfunded and pension liability? What kind of percentage right now from our?
Well, you can see, we have a, we have a, and our, really, our unfunded liability is is really low for the, um, you know, compared to other cities, um.
Okay, because our employee, former employees, um, they are.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have our, um, we have four groups of the unfunded liability, we have our miscellaneous group. We have our, um, they call it the pepper group, which is the new, you know, they have a lower percentage of. And then we have our, um, closed programs, which are the police and fire, which were former employees that, um, you know, it's closed, meaning that nobody else will enter it. But it's still, we have an unfunded liability.
And when did Pepper start, I know I was here, but I don't.
Two thousand thirteen, I think, yeah.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and eventually.
Eventually, we'll be at least.
It won't be all Pepper, but, you know, you have to get rid of all the old people first.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Speaking of cemetery.
I'm speaking myself, right?
It's a good cemetery segue, yeah.
Well, I know, you know, actuarials, they never talk about the people dying and people die.
Right.
In this whole plan, and they never discuss that, I think you're just mad, everybody keep, you know, everybody's.
We're living longer, unfortunately, but, fortunately.
Fortunately.
I'm enjoying it, thank you, thank you all. I guess now when I, well, let me see, when I look at this, some of the things, as I said before, we fund outside of the city of Sonoma. And I had a discussion with someone from the Catalyst Fund, they said, well, you know, we don't really, the city doesn't really. I said, you need to look at this, and maybe someone from the Catalyst Fund should know what we actually do put out for services that don't, they're not in our city. And I think it's really, it's important, you know, that we brag a little more about what we're doing.
Right, right, and I think that the one thing that we did with this budget was to bring forward some of the hidden costs that we were spending for our, you know, for some of our nonprofits, like, you know, um, water, rent, some of those things that we, you know, that, they're not, they're somewhat intrinsic. But the, we do provide that as well, so it's not just actual dollars, but but the intrinsic costs that that we're providing. So the resolutions start on page twenty-one, if we wanna get to that.
Page twenty-one, okay.
So we have three, three resolutions, we separated them this year, so, um. I don't know if you have any questions on the resolution? Oh, David Starr.
Speaking of resolutions.
I did it.
Page twenty-one, in the first section.
And this resolution is for asking for approval or this is reference?
Approval of this is, yeah, this is for the, this is if you approve it, this, um, you would approve the resolutions. And, um, the first resolution is for the entire city budget, including CIP. And then, um, uh, no, we, we split them out this year, I'm sorry, we took, um, this is just.
Subject change?
Yeah, and, no, well, it could change, but yeah, it's all, it could always change, but at this present time, this is the budget, yeah.
So.
Okay.
This question is just about the resolution itself, why do we call out the Public Art Fund? And, and then we make a statement, in addition, funding for aging infrastructure and major long-term capital projects is deficient.
Right, so what happened?
As soon as legal reason, we have to say that or?
Yes, because there is a, um, there's actually an ordinance, um, about the Public Arts Fund and it was passed in.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine and, um, shortly thereafter, the, we lost redevelopment. So, um, it was twenty-five thousand or one percent of, um, project valuation costs of public development projects. Um, so it's, that's one of the things that I want to discuss, that I would like to change that ordinance. You know, either we decide on a, you know, like a smaller funding amount every year, so we don't have to waive it.
Right.
Um, and really, I think we need to talk about the cultural arts program and the entire, you know, what are, what are we funding? Um, it's, it was, uh, it was done, it must have been done, I'm not sure if we were flush or whatever, but. But it was, it was before redevelopment was resolved and so.
This has to do, you have to do this with another ordinance?
We would have to change the current ordinance, but the current ordinance says that you will fund this every single year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we waive it, so we waive it, yeah.
So we have to waive it, yeah.
Based on the valuation of public projects, that the city does, not just projects in the city, but what are projects in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have to make a statement that we are funding for infrastructure is deficient?
Well, I mean, truly, I mean, if we, if we, you know, thought about all the infrastructure that we have to fund, it is, we are deficient, so. Um, that's, we're just saying that that's the reason that we're, one of the reasons that we're, um. Yeah, it's a justification for not funding.
Right now, we are working on a five-year's budget and I'm, I'm wondering. Do we have any, you know, ten years and twenty years capital improvement projects? And we really wanted to all build some of the building, the office and the. And let in a, you know, the civic hall as becomes a museum or something like that, if anybody, you know, previous.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think that, you know, I think a five-year capital improvement plan is pretty, um, you know, because after that, it's kind of like a, a long-range plan. After, even, even after three years, it's really a guess. And so, you know, I mean, there's many projects that the city would like to fund, but I think that a five-year capital improvement plan gives you that, you know, it's a, a pretty good plan to, to get funding within those five years, so. And to talk about it. And also for the projects to be completed, so.
If we wanted to add, following up on what Madeline said earlier about history, you know, I, I wanted to start funding the. Historical Society and the League for Historic Preservation, like we do all of our other sort of community partners, I think they are a community partner.
Because if we could magnify what they do, I think it would really be more, it would become more attractive to visitors.
Yeah, no, I agree, and there may be more, you know, but yeah, is that something we do now or do we do that in August?
Let's do that in August, because again, I, I had sort of thought that that would be incorporated into the cultural arts plan and so. I mean, that's something, so, so if we start funding that, I mean, it could be part of that, because I see it more as cultural and arts rather than. A community partner who, like, our community partners really provide, like, they're mostly recreation providers or those, those things, so. So, but I could see that as part of that plan, that we fund them, you know, based on that plan and that we can put that into the budget at that time, so. You know, it's something we could talk about.
But we could even modify it, i- if we came to the conclusion they are a community partner.
Yeah, yeah, and you can always modify that, the, the, um, the, that, um. Program, I mean, it was set up and it was based on, you know, the years of service and the years that, I mean, those have been funded for a long, long time and they go back way, way back, so, um, the funding for those particular. Partners, but we can certainly add to them. And, you know, it used to be that we had the tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then they voted on who it was and so. This was kind of a better way to do it, but we can certainly add to that, there's no reason you can't.
Yeah.
So, and it's because I know that there are some of the, I won't bring up the women's club because we do our own fundraising. But some are in need of infrastructure improvements and just, does that, do we get involved, does this get involved with that? No, it's just funding their operation or funding some of their initiatives, is that what?
The infrastructure, like for their buildings and stuff?
Yeah.
Here and there, right?
I mean, there is some in the, we, we do have some, like for depot parks and museums and such, we do have that in the, that's in our CIP program, so. Um, for this year, so.
Yeah, they put an air condition, that is the city, pay for that, yes.
Oh, okay, so, and I'm also thinking about the cottage, Mazanavi house, but then there's the cottage, it's, you know, I don't even know.
Behind it, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the bordered houses?
Is that what they call it, cottage, right?
Yeah, yeah, cottage, yeah, that's, that is a beautiful. They preserve the very nice.
It's the one behind it, that, um.
Someone has been boarded at, it's been boarded.
Yeah, somebody used to live in it, they worked in the city.
Yeah, somebody did live.
Yeah.
Chauvin?
Willie, yeah, anyway.
But I think if we're going to get involved in history, that certainly is a big, big part, I don't know, I don't even know what I'm talking about, but. It's a pretty big eyesore and I think the Sunrise Brewery, we're going to get involved with it for a while, but then you probably go, I can't do this, it's a lot. And it is, it is a attractive nuisance, because I think over the years, we've sort of.
Someone actually wanted to do like a coffee shop there, like for depot park and like all the bocce and everything.
That would be nice, yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds good to me, so this, I'm on page twenty-one, the dissolution of redevelopment twenty twelve, right?
Yeah.
Because I, it's interesting, the city of Sonoma, their last redevelopment agency money, which I always talk about. Was to the community center, it was two point five million dollars to do all the retrofitting. Um, and so many things that they needed, so it was two point five million, I think that was the last of the money. That did, that went there.
Yeah, yeah. That was a huge loss, huge loss for every, you know, municipality, but yeah, it was a huge loss.
And it slipped right under the wire.
It did.
Nobody came after us.
We need to make some changes, because not ending it up, this number not match it with the odd resolution. Like the page number twenty-one, that are thirty-eight thousand six hundred eleven dollars, that is, yeah. We miss, I look at, that is.
You are, you are a good accountant.
Over here, yeah.
The schedule is correct. So the, the, the dollars will be changed, so we can improve it with the.
So the resolution, yeah.
Exhibit's correct, um, that dollar amount in the resolution. Needs to be changed, so, um. So Rebecca said we can improve it with the corrections.
Okay, yes, all right. Yeah, that is, difference is one hundred thousand something.
The resolution will be. You should never do the final budget at one-thirty at night.
Of course, yeah, that is always, you know, these kind of number.
So the, um, the total operating budget should be thirty-eight million, seven hundred nineteen, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, right? Sorry. CIP is correct. And then the final one, the final resolu-, or resolution is just, um, um, adopting the authorized positions for the year.
That's page twenty-four.
Uh, authorized position?
The authorized position, twenty-six and twenty-seven, and then the CIP is.
I have a question about the, um, staffing. And forgive me if we've already discussed this, but I'm just noticing this now, are we deciding to move on from the senior planner role?
It's not in here, we haven't discussed that yet.
Because I just know, or at least.
It, it's still, it's still in here, we have, did we?
But zero, and we're doing two for associate planners, zero for senior?
Yes, yes, yeah, and that, that's, that's a future discussion.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so not now?
Not now.
Okay.
Okay, here I am, there, huh? Bob, do you have any? Maybe, and if not, maybe we can. Put in a motion. Do you have any in the final conclusion or summary or overall?
No, I just, again, I want to thank staff, and we did, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, not easy, you know, this is.
Yeah, all, all, like the, every, all the management team, with everybody and thank you too for all your patience and for going through all the meetings with us and. So, yeah.
You want to put in a motion to prove?
Oh, sure, but there are three, right?
Yeah, there's twenty-two, twenty-four. Yeah, and the staff report kind of, um, does a summary, if you want to just, I want to do the resolutions, look at them separately, however you want to do it.
Yeah, um, how about if I do, um. Adopting twenty-two, twenty-seven, five-year capital improvement, so I'd like to. Oh.
So on the staff report, um, it does, yeah. It's on page one? If we just do them in order?
Yes, okay, yes, we.
Okay, is, is that?
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Okay. All right, one, a resolution of the city of, city of, of the city, council of the city. Of Sonoma and the successor agency of the former Sonoma County Community Development Agency, adopting the fiscal. Year twenty-twenty-three city of Sonoma operating budget, waiving the annual allocation to the Public Art Fund for. For this, we're going to get them, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
That is right, yeah, yes.
Okay, approving community fund programming and heritage and community event fee waivers. If gatherings are allowed to continue per public health orders, the authorizing. And authorizing the interim city manager of her design, or her designate to execute task, um. Task orders for city engineering services within the CIP consultants.
With the, with the, um, correction and with the correction that was noted.
And with any amendments, is that what you're saying? Okay. So that's the first one?
Yes.
Okay, so the, I did the motion.
I'll second that.
Bob seconded.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Felder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Councilmember Villo?
Aye.
Mayor Dean?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries on.
Want to continue or?
Well, it gets rolling, I guess. Uh, a resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma, adopting the twenty-twenty-seven five-year capital improvement program. And authorizing capital project funds appropriated and unspent in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two to be rolled into the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. That's my motion.
Do the second. Second.
Oh, second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Felder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Councilmember Villo?
Aye.
Mayor Agarmati? Or, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mayor Dean?
Aye.
Apologies, thank you, it's you, Adamus.
And the third one, resolution of the city council of the city. Of Sonoma, establishing the list of authorized positions.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Felder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnett?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Councilmember Villo? Mayor Dean?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries on.
That's great.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, thank you again, yeah, thank you for hard working, yeah.
I'm blocking now.
And also thank you for public, thank you for Chief East and Steve. Participation, important.
And David, David, right?
David, yeah, you, yeah, you, maybe you can do a conclusion.
And we're, yeah, and Ken Wayne for, and Jenny for being here as well, thank you very much. Are we adjourned? Are we adjourned? Are we adjourned? Are we adjourned?
Yeah, oh, adjourned, yeah.
Yes, okay, so what, what's next?
Close session at four.
At four.
Close at four.
Okay.
At four.
At four?
Oh, wow.
In the, it's in the close session. It's in the close session.
Okay, that's fine. Or maybe we can start, yeah.
It can't start.
Yeah, no, yeah, because on schedule, I noticed, yeah, notice and official.
So notice me.